To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this my chair, Eric? Yes.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 23rd, 2013, as prepared and submitted by the clerk.
Second. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Request for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have 13-182, Budget Commission Amounts and Rates; 13-183, Budget Amendments; 13-184, Expenditure over $15,000, Firefighter Physicals; 13-185, Deer Survey; 13-186, Expenditure over $15,000, and Increased PO for Turf Grass; 13-187, Amending Ordinance 213, Emergotech Police; 13-188, Fiscal Year 2011 Chip Grant Rehab of 330 Cardinal Drive; 13-189, Fiscal Year 2011 Chip Grant Rehab of 612 Lafayette Road; 13-190, Purchase of 2014 Terrorstar SFA 4x4 for Streets; 13-191, Bids for Cloverdale Storm Sewer Improvements; 13-192, Cooperative Agreement for Ryan Road Reconstruction; 13-193, Increased PO Assure Vault Cloud Management for Council; 13-194, Net Profits Tax Montville Jet Agreement; 13-195, Payment Greater Than $3,000 for Engineering; and 13-1896, Parks and Recreation Center Director Salary. Reports from Municipal Officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple reminders for our customers. The ACH is the Automatic Clearing House where customers can sign up for automated payments from their bank accounts to avoid late fees and mail charges on their city utilities. The application forms are available at the Finance window. Online bill paying is also available by credit card, and the signup is on the front page of the city website. FirstEnergy customers have been billed or ready for energy-efficient lights and equipment, and it's available to all customers by calling 877-639-0218, or they can also email www.ohioenergykit.com. And you have to have your account number when you place your order. This has already been paid for. They send you electric light bulbs, nightlights, a surge protector, and there may be one other thing that is escaping me right now. But the Veterans Day, well, let me start with the WOW event, so we go chronologically. October 24th is a fifth annual WOW event. That's a brassiere decorating contest, and an event and dinner on Thursday, October 24th, at Weymouth Country Club. And what the monies for this fundraiser does is pays for mammograms and cancer screenings for those women who can't afford them on their own, so it's for a good cause. Dawn is on the, from my offices, on the Planning Committee, and tickets are available at our office for $40, and the event starts at 5:00 PM. The Veterans Day Concert is Monday, November 11th, 2013, at 7:00 PM at St. Francis Church, 606 East Washington Street. It's a free concert, no tickets are necessary. The attendees are asked to bring a non-perishable food item to donate to the St. Vincent de Paul Society Food Pantry, and we thank St. Francis, they've hosted this for, I think, since 2011. I think we started the Veterans Day concerts the year after the attacks in 2000, not 2011, 2001, and they've hosted them there every year since. I'd now like to invite up for National Case Management Week co-presidents Karen Hoven and Mary Ann Ott for a proclamation. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Case Management Society of America is an international organization of case managers and healthcare professionals committed to the growth and value of case management, and whereas this nonprofit organization contributes to the quality of healthcare in Medina, providing services to meet an individual's health needs through communication and available resources to promote quality, cost-effective outcomes, and whereas case managers are advocates who help patients understand their current health status, what they can do about it, and why those treatments are important, and whereas the week of October 13th through 19th, 2013, will be known as National Case Management Week, where case managers will be recognized for their significant contribution, now therefore I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby proclaim October 13th through 19th as National Case Management Week. Congratulations."
Thank you very much. We're very honored.
We represent, we're co-presidents of the Cleveland Chapter of CMSA.
I am employed by Medina General Hospital, and I'm a nurse case manager there. Mary Ann is a case manager for BWC for the State of Ohio. We started a chapter, it'll be one year now, last September, we're the Cleveland Chapter of CMSA. CMSA is the Case Management Society of America. It's a national, international organization. I believe there's like over 30,000 case managers that belong to this organization, and in 2014, the National CMSA Organization is bringing the convention, their national convention, to the City of Cleveland. So it'll be a big thing. They usually have over 3,000 case managers attending. So thank you very much, we're very honored.
Thank you. We're glad you could both attend. Mr. President, if I may, before I pass the microphone then, I'd also like to recognize in the audience Jonathan Mendel. Our nomination for the Community Development Director is here in our audience, and I hope council has a chance to meet him after the meeting here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to announce that our last departmental budget hearing is tomorrow evening. I'm sorry I stole your announcement there. Tomorrow evening, Wednesday, October 16th. That won't be the last we'll hear of the budget for 2014, because we're still going to have to work out when we get the final estimate on the healthcare and some other things, and maybe look at the income tax, depending on what council wants to do, but we'll be done with all of the departmental budgets. One of the items on the agenda later is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates. I'll hit on that when we get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Baraducci, please chief.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, the Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one quick note to update council. Today was the deadline to the consultants to send in their RFPs, RFQs for the downtown strategic plan, and we will assemble members from our steering committee to review those and have a recommendation. And that's my report.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week was National Fire Prevention Week, and our department participated in two key projects. We provided fire safety talks for every third grader in Medina City School System. They received a 45-minute age-appropriate talk, and it was done in a specially-designed fire prevention trailer to enhance their learning. I'd like to thank Sharon Township Fire for allowing us to borrow their trailer. And secondly, on Saturday, we had our open house fire safety fair at the Station Number One. It was very well attended, our estimates over 600 residents attended, as well as some other departments of the state, and then we also had a helicopter come in. I'd like to thank Captain Steve Ingersoll, who spearheaded both these projects for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Vogel, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to address a question that's being raised by commercial developers. The question is this, what building code upgrades will be necessary if a business wants to move into a new building? The first thing to consider is this, are any alterations to the building being proposed? If so, those renovations will have to comply with the current building code. In addition, depending on the scope of the alterations, accessibility upgrades may be required. The second thing to consider is if the new business is proposing to change the existing approved use of the building, if this is the case, it may be necessary to make unforeseen upgrades to make the building comply under the new use. These upgrades may include fire suppression and/or alarm systems, additional exits, more plumbing fixtures, and of course, accessibility upgrades. As always, if there are any questions concerning code upgrades for new buildings, please contact the Medina City Building Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of quick updates. Our West Smith project, we did hit a milestone last week, where we poured the mainline, the first of the three mainline concrete pavement sections. That has been opened, traffic is now using that new section, while work on the other two is continuing. State Route 18 paving at 57, as we know, work continued last week in the evening. We were able to work with ODOT to secure that. They did State Route 18 East, as well as the sections in town. This week, they will be doing State Route 18 West. I'm told after today, weather permitting, they should be done with mainline work by the end of the week. They have three to four more days of paving, and then they'll have a week, a couple weeks of some miscellaneous work, but only three or four more days of main paving. I also wanted to touch base, I've been asked about our historic district waterline project. We did complete the areas that were affected by the ODOT project, the blocks on Washington and Broadway. We still have one block to do on Liberty, the block between Broadway and Court. We wanted to kind of leave the site and let ODOT finish their work before we came back and replace the waterline on that section of West or East Liberty. Thank you.
Thank you. Nina Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, the Street Department kicked off the LEAF program for the season. Crews began in the northwest portion of the city, and they will rotate in a clockwise direction, northeast, southeast, and then southwest, ending up in Ward Four, and then returning back to the northwest section. Please remember briefly to rake the leaves to the curb, do not rake the leaves into the street. The city crews will try to get to the city as promptly and efficiently as possible. The residents can call 725-LEAF, L-E-A-F, which is 5323, and there'll be daily updates with respect to the pickup schedule. Lastly, I have the city auction will be held this upcoming Saturday, October 19th, at the City Garage, 781 West Smith Road, right before the construction. Preview will be at 9:00 AM, the auction will begin promptly at 10:00. We have over 500 items that will be going up for sale.
Thank you. In my exuberance, I missed a section of the agenda here, so we'll go back to reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to council, and will meet again on October 28th at 5:30. The Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Properties met on September 30th, we had one item on our agenda, it was dealing with the city pool. We moved on that item to finance, which we dealt with earlier tonight, and will be on the next council meeting. No other meetings scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings held, and I have no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Savoxx Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had no meetings and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing really to report. I do plan on trying to put together a meeting in November to get a, maybe a project update on the city projects, and see where we're at for this year, and how we're looking for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of Mayor's appointment, we have Jonathan Mendel for the Community Development Director.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
And Mr. Mendel, welcome to the city. Confirmation of council's appointments, we have one for Paul Rose for Pro QA Steering Committee, expiration is 12/31/13.
Move to approve council's appointment.
Second. Discussion. This appointment, Paul is the Chair of the Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, and the person serving on this committee will be the Chair of the Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, that's why Mr. Rose was named. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Notice of communications and petitions, there are none unfinished business, there's none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address, so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting, as determined by the Chair, or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Anybody?
You have one, Director. Yes, sir.
Do I have to give my address?
Yes.
All right. Greg Depew, 10125 Daniels Road, live in Westfield Township. I filed a police report, it sounds kind of weird, but basically, I'm being questioned by a federal prosecutor next week in regards to a police report that I've been unable to obtain in regards to an investigation done by an officer that doesn't exist. It was used against me in two different court hearings, and resulted in sanctions against me. I was filing a court order issued by Medina Common Police Court to alert of any violations that I've seen, which is why I made, attempted to make this police report. The issue I have is this federal prosecutor notified me that I'm also to testify in a federal court case on a completely different issue. But I was also questioned by the person that witnessed this issue going on, and he's also supposed to be questioned by, of all people, ATF. And 10 weapons were retrieved from his facility, right here in Medina City, in a drug bust or something down in Koshokton. And evidently, the person that testified in my court hearing is posing as this guy. And all I'm trying to do is get this clarified, but evidently, it is a federal offense to transfer falsified information from court to court to court. And I haven't really gotten any cooperation, I've talked to Matt Lanier on this, and just trying to get the city involved, where maybe this could be something you might want to look at, and try and help me out a little bit.
Thank you. I assume you spoke with the Chief of Police, did you get any, I mean...
No. I found out who the person is that posed as this police officer, and it is a city employee, but nobody's come forward and alerted any of these judges of what's going on. And I just, it's not, I don't really understand what's going on here, but every, there's been three different jurisdictions involved in this. Every detective that's looked at it has been released from their duty. And I just found out the Hinckley's officer that started this mess, he's been released from his duty just last week.
Well, I don't believe council really can take any action. I would suggest you speak with Mr. Huber, our Law Director, and maybe he can give you direction. I mean, we're the legislative body here.
Yeah, I did a public records request with him, and that's when I determined who this person was posing as this police officer, because even in court, they don't even, they don't even know what gender this person is. But that's kind of the whole thing, is I'd like somebody from your division to contact Judge Kovak and let her know what's going on, because that would very simply result in the dropping of whatever's going on over there, which result in the dropping of another court case, which would then result in clearing up a federal court case I have to testify in later this year.
Well, I understand that, but I think as council members, we don't have the right or the ability to interplead into a...
Oh, I understand that fully, but it would take the plausible deniability out of it with me notifying you what's going on right now.
Well, I understand what you're telling us, but this is, I think maybe we heard it when you called some of us, but, I mean, we have none of the facts that we can rely on, only your side of the story.
Yeah, what I'm trying to get into the short end is, maybe we need to have a meeting and sit down and go over what I have, versus trying to meet with a federal prosecutor and work this all out, because I have to present her with the city's stance on this.
I understand, if it's a city issue related to a city legal issue, it's up to the Law Director to make the determination on that. Council can't make the determination on any legal issue related to the city, except through the Law Director. So I suggest maybe, Mr. Huber, I don't know if there's going to be a meeting scheduled to get to the bottom of it, if there's something to get to the bottom to, but I think that you're the appropriate party to handle the issue, since you're the legal advisor for the City of Medina.
Yeah, I'll contact him tomorrow, and we'll see if we can get to the bottom of this, and then I'll give you an update as to where we came up with.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's no problem. Thank you.
Anybody else wishes to address council? Nobody?
Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 155-13, and ordinance amending ordinance number 213-12 passed December 10th, 2012, amendments to the 2013 budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first on here is from the $16,500 from the Electrical Aggregation Funds for Holiday Lighting. The next two are a split, because we're paying for a parcel of property, we're buying to expand our parks, we're paying for it out of two different funds. After that is the pump over at the municipal court to deal with the flooding issue they've been having, and the last ones are all pass-through funds for wellness, but we have to appropriate them, because we received them before we can spend them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 158-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 159-13, ordinance authorizing the payment of $21,500 to the Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority for operation of the Emergency Housing Assistance Program, EHAP.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Mayor?
Yes, sir. This is a request for $5,000 to Medina Metropolitan Housing, which helps us with housing needs in the city. From January to July of this year so far, they've assisted 27 households and provided them $10,000, greater than $10,400 in services. That was for emergency housing assistance, and then under the homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing, they've helped 11 other households in the city and provided another So it's a good investment, the city is getting its money's worth, and it's helping needy folks here in the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll and ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordnance 159-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 160-13, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into amendment number three to the engineering agreement with Delta Airport Consultants, Inc., for engineering services related to the emergency culvert repair at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Patton, or Mr. Huber.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the airport, one of the taxiways has a large sinkhole, and it has a result of damaged pipe underneath the taxiway. We received FAA grant money to make repairs. This amendment is an amendment for the costs of engineering, for the work. The cost is $41,585. I think there's a typo in the ordinance under Section 2, it says $4,159, that's not going to be enough money. I should say $41,590, because that's the amount that'll take to pay for the engineering.
Thank you. Typo so noted in the ordinance, and will be corrected. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordnance 157-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 158-13, ordinance authorizing the payment of $29,295 to your construction for the private home rehabilitation at 559 North Harmony as part of the fiscal year 2011 chip grant program.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Rice has given indication of what this one was, so if anybody has any questions. If not, will the clerk please call the roll.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordnance 158-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 159-13, ordinance authorizing the payment of $5,000 to the Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority for operation of the Emergency Housing Assistance Program, EHAP.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Mayor?
Yes, sir. This is a request for $5,000 to Medina Metropolitan Housing, which helps us with housing needs in the city. From January to July of this year so far, they've assisted 27 households and provided them $10,000, greater than $10,400 in services. That was for emergency housing assistance, and then under the homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing, they've helped 11 other households in the city and provided another So it's a good investment, the city is getting its money's worth, and it's helping needy folks here in the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll and ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordnance 159-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 160-13, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into amendment number three to the engineering agreement with Delta Airport Consultants, Inc., for engineering services related to the emergency culvert repair at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
services related to the emergency culvert repair at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton, or Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the airport, one of the taxiways has a large sinkhole, and it, as a result of damaged pipe underneath the taxiway, we received FAA grant money to make repairs. This amendment is an amendment for the costs of engineering, for the work. The cost is $41,585. I think there's a typo in the ordinance under section two, it says 4,159. That's not going to be enough money. It should say 41,590, because that's the amount it'll take to pay for the engineering.
Thank you. Typo so noted in the ordinance, and will be corrected. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 160-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 161-13, ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept two temporary easements for the West Smith Road reconstruction project.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I move to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance, Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This has to do with the existing project on West Smith Road. These two easements are necessary for us to complete some work on private property related to their drive aprons as they tie into the new street. We request emergency clause because the project is ongoing as we speak.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Resolution 162-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 163-13, and ordinance amending ordinance number 213-12 passed December 10, 2012, amendments to the 2012 budget.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first part of this is for the capital improvement plan. It's a part of the joint operating agreement that we have with the school on the rec center that we share in the capital cost. The second one is for purchase of some property up at the square.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Resolution 162-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 163-13, and ordinance amending ordinance number 213-12 passed December 10, 2012, amendments to the 2012 budget.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first part of this is for the capital improvement plan. It's a part of the joint operating agreement that we have with the school on the rec center that we share in the capital cost. The second one is for purchase of some property up at the square.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 163-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 164-13, ordinance amending ordinance number 153-13 passed December 23, 2013, relative to the auction, sale, or disposal of city equipment and vehicles no longer in use.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I move to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the council allowing the amending of this ordinance. There seems to be a little, there was a little confusion with respect to finalizing the auction list deadline. As such, the court had 12, I'm sorry, 11 printers, one 22-inch push mower, and we also reevaluated a vehicle from the sanitation department that's a 1998, so I appreciate the, again, the opportunity. It's the first mistake I made in 11 years. That's not true.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
ordinance 165-13, and ordinance amending ordinance number 116-13 passed July 8, 2013, relative to the payment to GenMet Construction LLC for the private home rehabilitation at 425 Orchard Lane as part of the fiscal year 2012 CHIP grant program.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I move to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
I believe the addition to, of this ordinance was a modification to the amounts that were due under the original CHIP grant program, in order to get it paid in time, the emergency clause, we had amended the ordinance and added the emergency clause. Everybody okay with that? Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordnance 165-13 passes 7-0.
Council comments?
Mr. Coin?
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you. Couple of things I'd like to mention tonight. First of all, Jonathan, welcome. Second, I had the privilege of stopping by the fire department's open house this past Saturday, and I just, I got to tell you what a great job Stephen, your staff, did. It was a great turnout, a great, great educational experience, especially for all the youngsters that attended. It also shows the city residents, again, how privileged we are to have the safety forces that you have available to you. Again, the police, the fire, the EMS, they all work together as a team, along with the mayor's staff, who's been trained in recognizing different types of emergencies. You've, and I've said this many times, you're, we are all fortunate to have the level of competency we have in all of our safety services. In saying that, we are fortunate. It goes back to my, my next soapbox is, is the schools. In a couple of weeks, we're going to be asked to cast a vote for our schools, and again, I'll mention it's an ordinary, not ordinary procedure for a council as a whole, and I'm not asking a council as a whole, but as an individual, I am asking you to reach deep down in your hearts and consider passing this, this school levy. I know a lot of us are living on fixed incomes, I understand that, but for the viability of our community, which we've made such strides, it's so important for the kids to have the same opportunities that we had when we were younger. If you have a problem with the way the school system is funded, I am among you, and I encourage you to notify either by email, by phone, by letter, your state representatives, your governor. And I know for me, before I cast my vote for any state representative or the governor's office, when that term is, my question will be, what will you do to fix the current school funding? If they can't answer that question, if they don't have a plan, they will not receive my vote. In saying that, we, we've been told for years that the way the schools are funded is unfair, but unfortunately, it's what we have now, and to penalize the children is, is not an option. I, in my heart of hearts, I truly feel that we, we need to pass this levy. Enough said about that, other than, don't forget, register a vote, and if you're registered, vote. You can make a difference in national, state, and local issues. The last thing is, we're having a Ward Two meeting on October 22. It will be held at Claggett School, and it starts at 7:00 PM. So anybody from Ward Two or any place in the city, if you have any questions or concerns or like to meet your representatives on council and the administration, we invite you to come. We've had some real interesting dialogues with, with our community over the, the past two years that we've been doing this, so, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Hilberg?
I just have one thing, just a reminder that I'll be giving a State of the Ward address on Thursday, this Thursday, October 17. Much like the mayor does his State of the City address, but this will focus strictly on Ward One. Again, it's this Thursday, October 17, 7:00 PM. It'll be at Fire Station Number One, 300 West Reagan Parkway. That's at the corner of Huntington and Reagan Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Colosar?
Yeah, just brief, I want to speak in reference to the school levy as well. I know Councilman Simpson just got done cheerleading for it, and I'm going to do the same. Last week, I spoke about a little bit of my experience with the Medina school system, growing up through it, and some of the opportunities. You know, and I know there's some people still out there on the fence, some have already made up their decision one way or the other, but you also have to think about the economic impact of a thriving school system, not only for a personal homeowner and their value of property, but as, as home values, you know, I'm sure you can find out there, if you don't have a school levy passing over some time, which the operation levy is our case, values go down. People aren't really excited about moving to a community that doesn't support the schools, and there's a lot of you out there that do, but I'm trying to get across to some of those that are still on the fence here. The schools make such a big impact in our community, and I think if we don't get this levy passed, you know, it's going to degrade the attractiveness of our community. And I think that's important to retain existing people living in our community and bring in new, new families in as well. So I ask those property owners out there that are on the fence, consider your investment. I mean, your house is the biggest investment you can make in, in your life most, most of the time, and having a strong schools keeps that investment, I think, in check. And I want to reach out to the business community and the Chamber of Commerce, and we're getting down here weeks away from the levy, and I would reach out to them to ask for support in this levy, because these, this community needs strong schools, I think, to have a strong business. I mean, this attracts people to come in here who want to work and live in the community, and having good schools, I think, offers additional selection for employers, knowing that, you know, that people work here and want to live here. So like Denny said, make sure you vote, but I ask you to support this levy and support this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comments? Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of things also. First of all, the fire department, I mentioned to the chief earlier, my wife is in a women's group, and she went last week to, they had their women's group, King's Daughter's meeting at the firehouse at Reagan Park, and it was a program put on to show you how to use fire extinguishers, and how to know if fire extinguishers are working, or if they're empty. And we have three or four fire extinguishers in our house, and, and I didn't think much about the meeting until my wife came home, and when she did come home after a number of hours, told me what a fantastic program it was, how much they learned, how much they appreciated it, how great the presenter was, and she got out every fire extinguisher that we had, and showed me that none of them really were working. And they, we had some that were so cheap that they were the kind, apparently, that are plastic and they can't even be refilled. So, you know, we have a lot of great services here, but there's things that go on that aren't, you know, aren't, aren't big presentations that are really important, and they're really meaningful, and that, you know, program that, that your department put on for just a small group of a few folks was, was really quite wonderful. I also had the opportunity today to come to the historic preservation board and to see the presentation of the new signage for Castle Noel, which is, I don't know if everybody's seen it, but absolutely beautiful. You know, the owner says they're working really hard to try to get, to be opened by the candlelight walk, and I think that's got to be one of the most exciting things that has happened here for, a lot of exciting things happen here, but that's one of the[1430.21]